All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, August 6th, 2024 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We're excited to have you all here. We have lots of people in attendance and many watching online. And at this time, I'd like to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones. I'd like to welcome our Commissioner for Precing Two, Kevin Falconer, who's going to lead us in our invocations. And then Tavin, if you'll go ahead and make your way over. Tavin Hammer is coming to us from Troop 366 with the Boy Scouts. And after Commissioner Falconer leads us in our invocation, Tavin's going to lead us in our pledges. So we appreciate you. All right, if you'll please stand.
All right, let us pray. Father, we come to you this morning. Lord, we just want to lift up your name, Lord. We want to glorify you in all things. Lord, we just thank you for so many blessings you give us. Lord, we also want to lift up to you and ask for peace for so many things, for peace in this world, in the Middle East, and peace in our country, peace in our financial markets, all of those things, Lord, that we know and we take comfort in knowing that you are the Prince of Peace. Lord, we just want to ask for guidance, direction, and wisdom this morning here for the Commissioners' Court. And Lord, we just thank you most of all for being our one and only Savior, for it's in Christ's holy and precious name we pray. Amen.
Well, good morning.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in the pledge of the Texas flag. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, great. Well, thank you, Tavin. Great job. We appreciate you and your mom being here. All right. At this time, we have two individuals that are registered to speak for public comment. The first is Mr. Willie Hudson. And I would like to remind our speakers that we do have a three-minute time limit on our public comments. Good morning, sir.
Morning.
Glad to have you.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Willie Hudson. I live at 623 Newton. I think, well, I don't think, it would be a good idea if there are any African-American scouts that they are able to come, get permission to come and do what the other scouts are doing, lead the pledge, be recognized. It'd be a good idea, I think. I don't think. I know it would be a good idea. I, only a few years ago, it seems, I was treated because of my skin color really bad. Didn't know it until I got finished North Texas. And then I was able to look back and see I was treated really bad because of skin color. That's still happening. I need, I would like for that to stop happening. And another thing that just troubles me is I want to do something positive. I was looking at the, the, the athletic accomplishments that we've made, because, well, my color has, people who are my color have made. And I would like for some of that to rub off on some other things. And I bring that up because I went to a funeral, and it was a long one. One day for, we just talked about the individual. And the other day, we, then we prayed and remembered what he had done. And this was a good friend of mine. I've known him since the seventies. And he passed away. And I thought, why don't we have some of that done out at St. John's? What, why isn't that place better kept? And my friend went to the, where the, where we honor servicemen. And that, it was immaculate. The place was well kept. And I'm wondering, why can't we do that same thing for St. John's? Now, one of the things that you brought up is that you're not responsible for that.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. That was, that was the three-minute timeline. But we appreciate you being here. Next is Chelsea Stallings. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Chelsea Stallings. I live in Denton, Texas, 76201. I will keep this short this morning. Excuse me. I know that last time I was here, I made some pretty bombastic claims about some treatment that I received at the St. John Cemetery Visitation Day on July 6th, about a month ago. I know that I'm unpopular when I come here, and I know that these claims are unliked. But, silly me, I did forget to include the videos last time. So I did just upload the link to the livestream of this on Facebook with the videos of the treatment I received from your executive director. There are two videos of her instigating against me, and then a video of her saying she's going to call the sheriff on me. I am allowed in the state of Texas to record myself to protect my person. I will be doing this moving forward when I need to. And I am going to just ask again, if you can please ask her to treat people correctly and with respect and nicely at these events, I would appreciate it. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. All right. Pause that. And we have Melinda Preston.
Good morning. Since Frank Phillips is here, I wanted to give a shout out to Frank. In a time whenever we're very concerned about elections and what's coming up in November, we had an opportunity to clean up the voter rolls in Denton. And we had, I had three dinners at my house where people came, and, and we fed them, and we shared with them, how do you clean up the voter rolls legally? How do you, how can we work with Frank Phillips? And we were able to get volunteers to help us. So y'all, we have been able to clean up, well, at least we have challenges, 31,609 challenges. We had 130 volunteers which helped do this. It was amazing. But one of the things I want you to know, as I work with counties all over, I'm with Citizens Defending Freedom, so I work with people all over the United States, but specifically in Texas, we are one of the only counties that wanted to clean up our voter rolls because Frank Phillips helped us. He was a part of it the whole way through. He was an encourager in it. We were able to, he's quick. Guys, you don't wait very long. He's on it. Like, you send an email over, he gets back to you within 24 hours. So I want to say shout out to Frank Phillips, shout out to Denton County. We're doing a great job here. I know we get criticized a lot, and when it comes to elections and things like that, but I have nothing but good things to say, and I'm excited to see even further in the future as being able to do. I think we got the majority of the low-hanging fruit done, like buildings where it was an office building, there was 100 people registered to vote. That's illegal. Things like that, we were able to clean those things up. And so it's just, it's a good day in Denton. So we were very excited. I wanted to let you guys know, want to thank Frank personally. And it is a good day. So, thanks for all y'all doing.
Thank you, Melinda. Thank you. Appreciate you providing positive comments. All right. Are you taking credit or blame? Yes. That's great. Well, Frank, we appreciate all that you do. I echo everything Melinda just said. Thank you. We're glad to have you. We're glad to, everyone does. We're glad to have you with the county. You're a shining example. And our elections office is a shining example across the state of the 254 counties. And so, anyway, it can be done, and done well, and done right. And Frank and his entire team make sure that happens. All right, let's go to item 3A, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing Health Services of North Texas on August the 4th through the 10th, 2024 as National Healthcare Center Week. We have Terry Johnson, Doreen Rue with us today. If y'all will come forward, I'm going to read this. Good morning. Good to see you, Doreen. Do you want to say any introductory comments before I read our proclamation here?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Judge Eds, and the Commissioners, and Gallery as well. We want you to know how much we appreciate the work that you do in the standing by Health Services of North Texas for 36 years and serving this community. And this week of National Health Center Week is a time when we get to celebrate the work that we're doing here and in the nation with about 1,400 community health centers across the nation, serving more than 31 million people. That makes us one of the largest network, or the largest network of primary care, and making services affordable for our communities. So I think most of you know the extent of the work that we do from prenatal to seniors. And we're just so thankful and appreciative of having you as partners in this work.
Good. Thank you. Did you want to, did you want to add anything?
I echo what Doreen said, and am so thankful for Denton County's partnership and your support through the years. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and read this proclamation. This is a court proclamation recognizing Health Services of North Texas on August the 4th through the 10th, 2024 as National Health Center Week. Whereas for over 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventative health care in our nation's medically underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. Health Services of North Texas, Denton County's local center, provided quality, effective healthcare to more than 11,200 Denton County community members in 2023. And whereas Health Services North Texas serves on the front lines, excuse me, of providing primary medical care, including pediatrics, behavioral health, prenatal care, women's health, and infectious disease care to our community regardless of ability to pay. In 2023, 97% of Health Service North Texas patients would recommend Health Service North Texas to people they know, further confirming the quality and effective care provided by Health Services North Texas clinicians and their healthcare team. And where centers are governed by patient majority boards, ensuring patients are engaged in their healthcare decisions and are considered the country's largest primary care network, serving over 31.5 million Americans in over 15,000 communities across the country. And where centers serve as beacons of essential resources and faith and support in the face of disasters and pandemics, and will continue to respond quickly to care for America's most vulnerable and underserved communities, and play a vital role in shaping the future of America's healthcare system. And whereas the center model continues to provide an effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, including geography, income, and insurance status, by improving health outcomes, reducing healthcare system costs, and overall costs of care by helping manage patients' chronic conditions. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court does hereby proclaim the week of August the 4th through the 10th, 2024 as National Health Center Week, and encourage all to participate this week by visiting their local healthcare center and recognizing the vital partnership community health centers have in the community. Done in open court, this is sixth day of August 2024 upon a motion by the Chair, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Members, are there any comments that y'all would like to make?
Thank you all for being here. Thanks.
The Health Service of North Texas. In times like these, we need all of us on board to help out. As I go around the county visiting people, I had a visit with another lady on last week talking about healthcare for everyone. Everyone should have access to healthcare. And I know that, you know, we all don't have money to pay for it, but I'm so glad the Health Service of North Texas is here to stand in the gallopers. I appreciate everything you all do, and I just want to tell you, keep up doing God's work, because it's exactly what it is. It's God's work when you're helping people help themselves. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you, ladies. We really appreciate it.
All right. I would like to welcome, did you want to say something, Kevin? Are you good? I'd like to welcome our Denton County Health Director, Dr. Matt Richardson, to speak as well. He's right behind you there.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you. I just wanted to reiterate what's obvious, and that is that community health centers all across America do great work, but Health Services of North Texas carries a lot of water around here. They help thousands and thousands of patients. Denton County Public Health, we do our best, but our primary care efforts are small and slight compared to the scope and scale of HSNT. And they do some phenomenal work. I'm proud to say we work well together. They have been a recipient of the tobacco settlement funds, that social service support from the court. And so, in conjunction with them, I would like to thank you for your investment in their work. And, and really, they change lives, and that matters. And so I think a public thank you, even from us, is in order. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments? All right, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your name. Miss, congratulations. All right. Next, let's go to item 3B. And I'd like to call forward our friends from the Colony. Thank you. They're making their way up here. Do you want to make, why don't you introduce yourself? And I'll go ahead and do the item here, which is item 3B, approval of a proclamation recognizing Officer Eduardo Hernandez as a hero in any appropriate action. So I'll go right ahead.
Good morning. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioner Falconer, Isabel, and everybody else that gave us the opportunity to honor this hero to my right. Obviously, he's the most important one here for me, Officer Eduardo Hernandez. He, I know you're going to talk about some of the details. And if you'll give me a moment, there's Deputy City Manager Joe Perez in attendance, and my counterpart, Assistant Chief Matt Winnett of the Colony Police Department as well.
Good. We're glad to have the Colony well represented in the, in with us today. And so this, you know, as we, and I do want to thank Commissioner Falconer and his office for bringing this forward. This was, reading this account just makes me so proud of you, Eduardo, and what you, what you did for this, this resident, and just makes me realize that heroes are among us, you know. And they don't always, many, many times they wear a badge, many times they do not, you know. And I, I'm so glad that you've, as oftentimes, you answered the call to public service to help our residents. So, y'all listen to this wonderful account of what he did. So this is a court proclamation recognizing Officer Eduardo Hernandez as a hero. And whereas every day, law enforcement officers make an extraordinary commitment to communities by putting themselves in harm's way to protect and serve all as they rise to the distinct challenges within their communities. And whereas Officer Eduardo Hernandez graduated from the Florida Law Enforcement Academy in April of 2016, and was previously a general crimes detective with the Oki Police Department in Florida, but prior to joining the Colony Police Department 19 months ago, December 13th, 2022. And whereas Officer Hernandez is married to Claudia Hernandez, who is a proud law enforcement wife. And whereas his current assignment with the Colony Police Department is a patrol officer, which places him along the city's major thoroughfares, day in and day out as he works patrol. And whereas on July the 19th, 2024, officers from the Colony Police Department responded to a major collision off State Highway 121 in a major thoroughfare. A driver apparently lost control of his vehicle, and it went airborne. The vehicle was pinned between two dividing barriers. Officer Hernandez initially attempted to extinguish the vehicle fire, but was unsuccessful as the fire kept reigniting. Officer Hernandez was able to get close enough to the vehicle to utilize a metal breaching tool to break a window on the driver's side and pull the individual out of the car. And whereas Officer Hernandez's heroic actions saved the driver's life as he made a life and death decision in mere seconds. Officer Hernandez went to the hospital to check out himself, but was back on the job within hours. The tool Officer Hernandez used that night was a recent acquisition by the department, and one that proved timely for a driver and an alert law enforcement officer in the Colony. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby recognize Officer Hernandez for his act of bravery and call upon all citizens to recognize and honor him in the same. Done in open court, this is sixth day of August 2024 upon a motion made by?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. All right, Commissioner, you get to speak first, sir. Thank you for bringing this item forward.
No, thank you, and Officer Hernandez. And I'm so proud of you. And my wife and I were, were watching news when, shortly after this happened and saw that. And I'm like, people say there aren't any heroes. There's a hero right there in our midst, five minutes from where we live. You, you took care of that. It was, I would love to think that if I were in that kind of situation, I would do the same. I don't, I hope I would, but I don't think everyone would. I mean, you were, this car was on fire. By the way, this is an electric car. And, and I having, being an owner of an electric car, I've done a little research on that. And, and it is almost, yeah, almost impossible to put those fires out. And by the way, they also almost always end up being burned to a crisp. And that was going to happen. It happens very quickly with those electric car vehicles, because there's this reaction that just gets hotter and hotter. And yet, yet you went right there and said, I'm going to get that guy out because he's going to die otherwise, which he would have, I'm quite sure, and put yourself at risk. By the way, I know there were some other off- By the way, I know there were some other officers there as well, but you, you were the one, I mean, the video is incredible. If you haven't seen it, you had to go out there and watch it. He's having to break the window and literally, because I think he was in shock, right? He's, he, he had to pull him out of the window. And I'm like, that is a local hero. So proud of you, and we're glad we can do just a little bit to acknowledge you for this. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Falconer, thank you for the recognition. I truly appreciate it, and to the rest of the commission. And Judge, thank you as well, too. I'd like to say that I was just doing my, my part, and thank you as well. And I'm sure that any other officer in my position would have definitely done the same thing, too, and stepped up to the, to the moment as well.
And I think it's Claudia, your wife is here, right?
Yeah, forgive me for not introducing this. This is Claudia Hernandez.
Well, let's give her a big hand.
Yes, I want to.
I didn't see her there.
And I also want to especially thank her, because my son-in-law is also a police officer. And so my daughter, the families, it is a big thing for the families, having to support our first responders like you and, and like our Assistant Chief. And so Claudia, I thank you so much, and we appreciate that. I know that that is, there's always a stress level every time you are out, and we, we pray for your, your protection all the time, but thank you so much.
We know that the police and fire and our public safety, you know, are very special and noble professions. And, and you're exactly right, Commissioner, the, the families serve as well, because they don't always sleep the same, or every time they say goodbye in the morning or at a shift beginning, they don't always know how that's all going to end when it gets over. And so it's a special burden on the families as well. But it's also a special time of rejoicing the, the positive contributions they make to others and to other people's families, you know? And so thank you, the positive ripple effect, as you were able to save this individual's life and as they get to continue forward, and they get to celebrate that, that life. And, and I think that's just great. And I know they have a debt of appreciation to you and to the Colony Police Department, and we're glad we can say thank you and job well done, Commissioner.
Officer Hernandez, I want to thank you also. You know, we all have choices in life. You chose to be a police officer to help people. And oftentimes, when you're helping people, you don't know that, those people, you don't know if you're going to get hurt or whatever, but you choose to go in and still help people, no matter what the situation is. Many of us, and I know I would have been yelling and screaming, somebody help, but that somebody was you. And I'm so glad that you were there that day, because somebody else might have had a moment of hesitation, but you stepped right up to the plate. I appreciate you and thank you and all the police officers all over for what you all do for us, for taking care of us when we can't take care of ourselves. We expect you to take care of us a lot of times, and when you need to take care of yourself sometimes.
That's right.
Thank you, too, Ms. Hernandez, also for having your back, because without her having your back, you can't do your job. You got to have somebody to encourage. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes, sir. So it's a very rare opportunity in law enforcement to have the opportunity that you actually had. It doesn't happen in, in the career very often. You know, you, you always train for it, you think about it, you're driving, you think about what may happen and what you would do if it did happen. You hear about other officers in other parts of the country and what they did, and you know, everybody's a Monday morning quarterback and how they could have done better or what they should have done. What people don't understand is when in the moment, you don't have much time to think. And your reaction is based on the training that you've received and just you as an individual. And, and we would love to think that all officers would run straight in and do exactly what you did, but that's not always the case. I've been in law enforcement for twenty-five years, and there's plenty of, unfortunately, there's some officers that would think a little different, and I can appreciate that. It's human nature. But, so it is very unusual to have the opportunity first, and then second, for you to actually act the way you did and do what you did is, is very commendable. And yes, it is the job, but it doesn't mean that you always do that job from that perspective, right? It's, it's very easy for somebody to think about themselves and not want to get hurt, because you did put yourself in harm's way, bottom line. And, and to your wife and family, most people don't understand what it is to, to be a family member of a law enforcement officer. Yes, when they leave, you worry about them. When they come home, you're, you're happy. Most of the time, depending on what shifts you're working, your wife may or may not be sleeping. If she has a job, you're leaving and coming, crossing. So people really don't understand and don't quite give the respect to the family members that they should. And I appreciate your wife, and, and I don't know if you have any children, but they have to deal with the same thing. It is, that's a perfect example of where you may not have come home that night or that afternoon, because if that car does explode while you're there, you're more than likely going to get some pretty heavy shrapnel and, and may not survive, right? But you were thinking of that individual. So that, that's, that's pure dedication to the job. And how long have you been a officer?
In total, about eight and a half years, sir.
Okay, so you're right there at that point where you're still, you're still, you're still excited about doing any and everything possible, which is great.
He should be.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's what we hope for. And, but anyway, congratulations for, for having instilled in you just to go ahead and act and use your training, because that's what it takes. And so thank you so much for what you do for the public. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, any other comments? All right, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Such a, such a nice guy. I can just tell he's a blessing in many ways to that department.
Absolutely.
All right, let's go back to the item two. Members, are there any items on the consent agenda you'd like to pull or do have a motion to accept it as presented? With a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A, which is approval of the order-making appointments. Item two B, it's approval of interdepartmental transfers. Item two C is approval of budgetman request one zero two zero two zero for health resources to transfer twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars from non-departmental medical expense drug test to pre-employment services to cover the costs associated with the pre-employment testing for the remainder of the twenty twenty-four fiscal year and any appropriate action. And item two D is approval of budgetman request one zero two zero three zero for the Department of Transportation and Engineering to transfer six thousand dollars from professional services to garage supplies to purchase necessary garage supplies for the remainder of the fiscal year. Next, let's go to item five A is approval of bill report. Payments from CSCD, Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, BIT, Interest, and DA forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have five invoices to Citibank that I need to add to the list today, and they total eight, I'm sorry, six hundred and ninety thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents.
Okay. All right, we.
Um, not last week.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the amended bill report? We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jeff. Next is item six A, approval of renewal of RFP two zero two five eight one, mail pre-sort services to Pitney Bowles, Pre-Sort Services LLC, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B, approval of the award of ITV two four two eight two-two Ripley Road Culvert Replacement to Two L Construction LLC.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we will pull item six C. We will pull item six C. Next, item six D, we will pull item six D. Let's go to item seven A is approval of budgetman request one zero two zero one zero for the county clerk appointed representation department to transfer four hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty dollars from non-departmental unappropriated contingency with three hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and seven dollars to court-appointed attorneys and sixty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars to juvenile court-appointed attorneys to allocate funding for remainder of the fiscal year for mandated appointed appointment of counsel for indigent defendants in any appropriate action.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven B, approval of the submission of the appraisal roll for Denton County for tax year twenty twenty-four from the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector. This is her last time to do it, Michelle French. Good.
This whole year is a lot of the last times to do things, isn't there? I'm not thinking about it. I'm not thinking about it. It's very bittersweet. But yes, this is my last time to do this. It's always an honor to be able to come before you all and, and to do something that is an annual function, but one that is exceptionally important. And so with that, here we go. So as usual, I'm going to read all of the values, twenty twenty-three, prior year, and then twenty twenty-four, and we'll just go right on down the line. So total appraised value for twenty twenty-three was, and that's tax year, twenty twenty-three tax year, twenty twenty-four tax year, two hundred and fourteen billion, sixty-two million, seventeen thousand, four hundred and nineteen. For twenty twenty-four, total appraised value is two hundred and twenty-five billion, four hundred and fifty million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two. Total assessed value for twenty twenty-three was one hundred and ninety-five billion, nine hundred and eighty million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and eleven. Twenty twenty-four, two hundred and fifteen billion, four hundred and fifteen, four hundred and fifty-six million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and seventy-one. Total net taxable value for twenty twenty-three is one hundred and seventy-four billion, four hundred and sixty-four million, forty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-four. For twenty twenty-four, one hundred and ninety-two billion, sixty-eight million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-four. The freeze adjusted taxable value, which is after the tax ceilings have been subtracted out, for twenty twenty-three, it was one hundred and fifty-eight billion, sixty-five million, eight hundred and fourteen, eight hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one. Twenty twenty-four is one hundred and seventy-one billion, eighty-eight million, six hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and sixteen. Total new improvements last year, twenty twenty-three, was nine billion, one hundred and ninety-two million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and nineteen. For twenty twenty-four, it's eight billion, three hundred and eighty-eight million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six. Certified anticipated collection rate is one hundred percent. And the value under property, the value, value of property under protest, twenty twenty-three was two billion, one hundred and forty-six million, one hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and seventy. For twenty twenty-four, it's five hundred and twenty-one million, two hundred and thirty thousand and fifty-six. And then we're going to move on to the certification of the anticipated collection rate and excess debt collections. As I said earlier, our anticipated collection rate this year is one hundred percent. Our certified excess debt collections was seven million, five hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-one. And with that, those are the values for twenty twenty-four.
All right. Chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? Michelle, did you have any comments?
No, sir, I don't. Just, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead. Did any of y'all have any comments about the role y'all wanted to talk about? Or Michelle, did you?
No. Excellent job for you and your folks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You did a great job. Okay, we have a motion, a second, any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Michelle. All right, let's do. Item seven C is approval of certification of the amount of debt taxes collected in excess of the anticipated amount in the preceding year for Denton County for tax year twenty twenty-four. Jeff, did you want to speak to this? Or did you have any comments? Or do you want to just?
Have really no additional comments, other than I did like seeing the new additions, eight point four billion dollars. That's the, that's the key to keeping the, the additional revenue that we're going to get from growth, and, and that's what I usually look for in that. So.
Perfect.
Everything looked good, other than that.
All right. Chair move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll do seven D later today. Let's go to eight A, a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge Commissioners, good morning. We have one new hire in the four hundred and eighty-first District Court, one new hire in adult probation, one re-hire in adult probation, one promotion in the district attorney's office, one new hire in the district clerk, three new hires in UNA probation, five new hires, and seven promotions in the sheriff's office. Four of those are detention officers, one.
Perfect. Good, thank you again. That is, that is presented for recording purposes only. Let's go to item nine A, approval of the Texas Health and Human Services Commission, HHSC, contract number HHS zero 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 seven three four six zero 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 eight, Family Planning Grant Amendment Number Eight, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is nine B, approval of Denton County Indigent Healthcare Program eligibility standards for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is nine C, approval of business associate agreement between Denton County, Denton County Public Health, and Asset Panda. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve A, approval of the first addendum to the master services agreement and schedule of services between Smart Communications in Denton County to extend the agreement for renewal term of one year.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve B, approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five affiliation agreement between La Grona Academy, Denton Independent School District, and Denton County, Texas, and any appropriate action. The chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is twelve C, approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five interlocal cooperation agreements between Denton County and one, the Aubrey Fire and Police Departments, two, the Copper Canyon Police Department, three, the Corinth Lake Cities Fire Department, four, the Corinth Public Works Department, five, Justin Fire and Police Department, six, Kruger Ville Police Department, seven, Pilot Point Fire and Police Departments, eight, the Trophy Club Fire and Police Departments for the use of the Denton County Radio Communications System. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen A, this is approval of the order of election for the number fifth, twenty twenty-four general election for the purpose of electing county and precinct officers as required by Article sixteen, Section sixty-five of the Texas Constitution, and any appropriate action. Frank, did you want to explain this? We're glad to have you.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. This is the official order to say, hey, please have an election in November. Sometime probably mid to late September, I'll bring back the notice, which will have all of your early voting sites and your election day sites listed. And just as a reminder, the last day to register to vote is October seventh. And if you vote by mail, the last day to request application for ballot by mail is October twenty-fifth.
Perfect. Good, thank you. Perfect, good, thank you. Any questions, Frank? All right, chair move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Frank. Next is fourteen A, approval of Addendum One to Agreement for Point-of-sale Motor Vehicle Registration Renewal between Denton County, Texas, and AAA Texas LLC, as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector. Move to approve. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're gonna pull fourteen B, we're gonna pull fourteen B. From the agenda, let's go to fourteen C, approval of Technical Proposal for the Facility Emergency Floor Plan Maps Consulting Agreement between Denton County, Texas, and Jensen Hughes Incorporated, an amount of seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, to come from auto line item zero one five two one zero six zero eight five, contract labor emergency management, as recommended by the Director of his Office of Emergency Management. Move to approve. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, chair will second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen D, approval of interlocal service agreement for rural addressing service between Denton County, Texas, and Dinco nine-one-one District, an amount of twenty thousand dollars from auto line item zero one seven two zero seven one zero five five, as recommended by Kevin Carr, Chief Information Officer. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, on fourteen E, Scott, do we need to pull that whole thing? That would be as much what I thought, I had it, so we'll pull fourteen E as well. Next, let's go to... Number seventeen, which is community updates, this is local updates from the Commissioners' Court, and we'll start with Commissioner Precinct One.
Thank you, Judge. The Little Elm Veterans Committee is hosting a happy hour social for veterans to meet and learn about how the committee can serve them. The event will be held on Thursday, August eighth, from six to eight P.M. at the Tender Smokehouse, and food and drinks will be available to purchase. So that'll be Thursday, August eighth, from six to eight P.M. for the Little Elm Veterans. That's all I've got, sir.
Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you, Judge. So, we've got a few things going on in Precinct Two. We have the Fund of the Sun Back to the School Bash, that's actually today, from eleven to one at Nebraska Furniture Mart, so make your way there. And then, in Little Elm, there's the Citizens Government Academy that is taking applications through this Friday. It's an eight-week program that begins September fourth.
Next Friday, not next Thursday.
So, that is a...
Sixteenth.
I've done that in Carrollton, it's a great...
I have very much this morning, everybody's out.
I've got a couple more, I just was trying to figure out the, the feedback, so.
Oh, sorry about that.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, we still have, Frisco, we've got summer movie series this, on the ninth, eight o'clock at PGA Frisco. Crossroads has their summer market on the tenth, eight, eight to eleven, on, at Crossroads Park, and Carrollton has sounds on the square on August ninth, at six o'clock in downtown Carrollton. And I also just want to shout out to my wonderful wife, we celebrate forty-one years of marriage today.
Happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you so much.
It's a milestone. Commissioner Mitchell.
Kevin, you didn't get Corinth, did you?
No, I did not.
Okay, there are Friday Night Flicks, August the ninth, at seven P.M. at the New Agora Park in Corinth. I have feedback. Lake City's Chamber of Commerce, it's gonna be August fourteenth, at eleven-thirty A.M. at Sneaky Pete. Flower Mountain Lakeside Music Series, August ninth, at eight P.M. Lakeside Parkway Shops at Lakeside, Lake Dallas, Lake City's Trade Days and Farmers Market, August tenth, eight A.M. to noon. Lewisville Thrive Acoustic Jam, August the ninth, twelve P.M. to three P.M. And River Care Cleanup, August the tenth, eight A.M. to eleven A.M. at Layla, in Lewisville. That's all I have this morning.
All right, we got a state award, and then we got an international award I'm gonna talk about here, so... We, I want, congratulations to Linda Ruth of Lewisville for being recognized with the Yellow Rose of Texas Award, given through the Governor's Office. This award acknowledges Texas women who have significantly contributed to their communities through community service, preserving history, and present accomplishments, and building for the future. She's given thirty years of public service and community involvement, so congratulations to Linda Ruth. And I don't know if y'all been watching the Olympics or not, but congratulations to Denton County's very own Vincent Hancock, an Army veteran of Argyle, he received his fourth Olympic gold medal in Minskite in Paris. He previously won gold medals in two thousand and eight, and twelve, and twenty, and he's the only shooter to win Olympic gold more than once. And so, he won a silver medal in the, he also won a silver medal in the skeet mixed team, so congratulations to him, and I think he practices in Northlake as well, so it's just really, congratulations to him, we're excited. Maybe we can get him to come to court, I'm gonna work, I'll work on that. And then, the, and then, this is super fun, the Motor City Mayor Cookoff, and I think we've been there before, those of us up here, that we've been there, so it's gonna be August the twenty-eighth, and they're gonna, each mayor's gonna be, who's competes raise money for local nonprofits, and some of our mayors are Corinth Mayor, Bill Hydeman, and Denton Mayor Gerard Hudson, and Flower Mountain Mayor Cheryl Moore, and Hickory Creek's Lynn Clark, and Hallanville just Charlotte Wilcox, and Lake Dallas's Andy Nolan, Lewisville's T.J. Gilmore, and Shady Shore's Cindy Ogambal, they've already, already, already spoken. Are you gonna judge it, Bobby? Are you gonna participate or judge it? You, I think you ought to judge it, I think you'd be good judge.
No, I don't want to eat all that pizza.
Are y'all going? So, it's, it's a lot of fun, it's gonna be, it's there in, in four oh seven, a lot, Greg Tierney does it, it's on four oh seven there, Motor City Pizza, it's a lot of fun, so tune out, it's, it's, it's a lot of fun, and it's great pizza that the mayor's put together. So, anyway, let's go to executive session. Item fifteen A, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven one one A, consultation with attorney, closed meeting when a governmental body seeks the advice of its attorney about pending litigation, in cause number four two four C V zero zero six two seven, Staudt Lynette Sylvie versus Denton County, Texas, at all, currently pending in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas Sherman Division. And then we've got five, fifteen B, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property, closed meeting to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, if deliberation, open meeting would have a detrimental effect on possession of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person. And fifteen C, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven four five A one, personnel matters affecting the county advisory body, closed meeting to deliberate the employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a member of advisory body to with the City of Denton Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, TERS, number two, West Park Board, in any appropriate action. And it is nine fifty-five, and we are executive session.